We do. I call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
Yes.
I pledge.
You have the states remain and we give the republic for which the standings, one nation under God, indivisible, the routine justice for all.
Well, please. Councilor.
I'm here.
Councilor.
Here.
Just.
Here.
Me, for Jim Brown.
Here.
You're good. Here. And there was no public comment?
No public comment.
All right, moving on to approval of meeting minutes for the August twentieth twenty twenty five regular meeting. Um, as council had an opportunity to review the minutes, the changes, revisions needed. I can make a motion, please.
Oh, make a motion to approve the minutes for the August twentieth twenty five regular meeting.
Second.
Vote, please. Councilor.
Yes.
Councilor.
Yes.
Councilor.
Yeah.
Me, for Jim Brown.
Yes.
You're good. Yes. All right, moving on to reports. City Administrator Frank Salvato.
The only thing I have to say is we made a mistake on my first email today, and we're not upside down in the budget, so.
Thank you.
Very good news.
Great mistake. Probably for the.
Uh, Finance Director Mona Edwards. Um, before we move on, just uh would like to share that the groundbreaking for the childcare center, the a place for kids will be taking place this next Tuesday at two o'clock at the property next to AMC West. So if you want to come and enjoy that, it'll be a um fun occasion, I do believe so. Moving on, we have no presentations this evening, so new business agenda item eight, first reading of ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero six, an ordinance of the city council from the city of Cripple Creek, Colorado, amending sections of the Cripple Creek Development Code related to accessory dwelling units.
Mail is not on. Um. And Erin might want to take this. I'll try. Uh, we do have or have had a uh additional dwelling unit ordinance that allowed them already in Cripple Creek, had for a long time. And the state, in their infinite wisdom, the legislature passed another ordinance and said, you have to comply with this law. So Erin and group had to go back through our ordinance and make sure it met state law requirements on ADU. Uh, one thing that uh, you have anything to add there, Erin, or you want me to go to them?
Yeah, I would like to fine tune that just ever so slightly. I I would like to fine tune that ever so slightly.
And we can't hear you. But while she's doing that, one of the questions that we have that you don't have to address tonight that you might want.
Is that better?
Second hearing on the ordinance is related to short term rentals. You don't have to allow ADUs for short term rentals if you want to put that in your ADU ordinance. In other words, in in my mind, just speaking from my perspective, we've been trying to get more housing for people that work up here to live. So do you want to allow someone to build an ADU in their backyard and then make it a short term rental? That's a question for council. So you could put that in this ordinance right now. It's not in there. But if you decide between now and your next, or you can decide tonight that you want it in there, it's the first reading. Or you can think about it for a month because we're gonna have to publish it, whether you actually want to uh allow short term rentals in the ADUs.
I was curious on the ADU.
I guess.
Sewer water. Is that a, are those separate taps, Frank, or do you tap into your?
It it's either way. You know, you could tap into the exist- existing house.
There.
Senator.
What is Frank's?
Well, it's it's me on the coming through his phone, but does she have anything she wants to add?
All right, Erin, you're on.
I think we just lost the call.
Yes, Erin.
All right. You have anything you want to add?
All right, just Frank can say it then.
Yeah, this isn't working, Erin.
Try to call her again because she left.
Sorry.
She left Zoom again.
No, that was her.
It's just.
Like, can you call her?
She.
Is a. Hello?
It's that.
Is a.
Test it. Nope. Well, a little bit. You were gonna tell you, she was telling you she's not on Zoom to try Zoom again, but you hung up.
Oh.
If she can call, then maybe we can hear her because she looks good on my side. There, then.
There was issues with setback. You know, our ordinance required something her and Ken, I guess, went around and around a little bit on setback, and I think Ken and I agreed to go with Erin's call on the setback requirement to meet the state law. So the ordinance meets state law. We have to have it approved by first of August or first of October. Don't know if we'll make that date. We now have to publish. You didn't publish early, did you? So.
That was.
Huh? It was? Okay, great. All right, we'll make the, we should make the next meeting before the October first thing.
Bruce, what was the question about? I was just curious on an additional dwelling. If you build one, do you have to have a separate water sewer taps, or do you can you tie into your existing tap? How it works?
I think that's. I think it's either way. I think from talking to Ken, you can either tie onto the existing if the people want to pay the utility bill for their ADU, or you can, or they can put it on a separate tap and let them pay their own water bill. So it really comes on the people that are building. Can you hear us, or can you say something?
Can you hear me?
No.
Okay. Don't know what it is. Does that, is that better?
Erin, call my phone. Call my phone.
I will do that.
One of them. She has put my number, so.
So Frank, well, the setback's the only difference from our ordinance and versus the state.
You there?
I am.
Oh, please. Okay, now go ahead, Erin. I think they can hear you.
Right, so to the water and uh sewer tap issue, council can set that how it wants. We haven't changed the existing code. The, with regard to with regard to changes from our existing code.
Can you hear us?
You were coming through our speakers for a while there. Try it again.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Sorry, you know, zoom, it changes every time you get into it. So I am, I apologize for the confusion. So um I would just like to add an overarching statement um and to correct the record so it's real clear. The legislature passed a bill in twenty twenty four, but explicitly excluded Cripple Creek. Cripple Creek was not subject to the bill having to do with accessory dwelling units. We were explicitly carved out. So the city of Cripple Creek, as far as we knew, did not have to comply with the ADU requirements that the state legislator pa- legislature passed in twenty twenty four. However, two weeks ago, the governor of Colorado issued an executive order that put at risk any uh a a list of grants um and being funded by grants unless Cripple Creek came into compliance with a law that the state legislature explicitly carved us out of. So that's why we're here. That's why this is presented to the city council because you know, we want to be able to not put at risk DOLA grants. So that's why we're having to do this. Um, so with regard to water and sewer taps, I um we are not addressing those in this um ordinance. They could be addressed, however. Uh, council could say we definitely want there to be, have to be an additional tap uh in order to build the ADU because the state statute said we could do that. State statute didn't it preempt our ability to uh require ADUs have a a separate tap. So, but we did not address that in this ordinance. It is a policy decision for city council, could be added to the second reading ordinance. Um, the question that uh council member Trinari had, uh is it just the setbacks that have changed? Um. No, I would tell you that a major change is that um ADUs in most locations under the city's pre uh pre this ordinance uh situation um would require a ADU to be approved by uh a special exception, uh meaning that it would have to come to city council. And that was something that the state legislature barred outright. Not only did they say you have to put an ADU in any zone district that allows a single family detached residential structure, yeah, but you have to allow it as a use by right. You cannot impose any sort of a public hearing process on it. So you will see in this ordinance that you now get to um get an ADA approv- ADU approved through just an administrative site plan approval process. So I think that's one of the major changes. Um, and there's some others that ripple through. State statute said you could not uh impose any parking restrictions. Um, and so we had to go through and change our, the parking standards as they relate to the accessory dwelling units as well. So um in addition, one issue that Frank presented, and it's not written into this ordinance, be another policy decision for the city council. And that has to do with whether or not you would bar prohibit ADUs from being used as short term rentals. And we can easily put that into the second reading ordinance when we bring it back to you. And I will pause there and ask if you have any questions.
What are the short term?
Nineteen, I think we allow thirty five. Miss you, of course.
Um, Erin was was when this enacted in twenty four, our home rule cities, do they have to comply with this legislation? Some do. Cripple Creek specifically did not have to. It was, it was in a category that uh was carved out. Well, no, home rules, like Woodland Park or all the other ones, did they have to comply with this legislation, or were they exempted? It wasn't on a home rule statutory city basis. It was whether you were in a transit oriented district and within a metropolitan planning or area, MPO, metropolitan organi- I can't remember what the terminology is, but it it was a um a um test, a two part test. You had to be in a transit oriented district and within a metropolitan planning organization. And so there were a number of municipalities that fell out of this applying to them because they weren't eat, they weren't in, they didn't meet those two tests.
We participate with Pikes Peak Area Council of Governments, but we're not actually a member because Teller County is not, so so we didn't, that's what they were saying. We were actually exempt from the law that was passed. And then the governor comes up and throws, well, yeah, but you have to comply. You're not gonna be eligible for any of these grants, which are DOLA grants. And I think there's, there there's a lawsuit going on with that, is my understanding. I think.
There are municipalities uh challenging that directive. Um, first came out as a directive just that filtered out of the governor's office, and then he formalized it with an executive order on, I think, August fifteenth.
So Erin, I have a question. If we address STRs in the ordinance, could we put a cap on the number of ADUs that could be STRs, or would that fall under our total thirty five limit?
You could do either. You could make a limit within a limit if you wanted to. It'd be, you know, I I turn to your staff who'd have to administer that, figure out how to do that. But theoretically, you could do that.
Thirty five could be assessed, ADUs. What you're saying.
I was saying, would, I mean, could the, would the ADUs be a separate component outside of the thirty five?
Oh, so they're like thirty five plus five.
Cap it and include it in the limit of.
Either way. I think however you want it, you could limit it totally. They couldn't have STRs, or you could, I feel, I still think you want to fall under the thirty five max STRs because of the issues we're having with housing. I mean, that was the regi- the original reason of setting a limit was because we need housing and the people that work up there. But it's your decision how you want to address it.
I honestly think I'd like to prohibit it for now and see where it goes. Um, you know, if we can get some, you know, seven square foot little studios that people can rent is, you know, whether permanent, transitional, whatever. Um, I think we need more than verbals.
I think that limiting them is counterproductive with SIS. I don't think it's necessarily our right to tell people that they can live there, how they rent it, I guess. And it would, let's say, somebody builds one or wants to build one, but they don't want it, or they want it for an STR. Chances are, it'll only be an STR for a couple of years, and if they decide not to do that route, then they can rent it that long. And it it just opens up opportunities for it. And if somebody wants it as an STR to begin with, and then doesn't want to build it because they can't, then we just don't have it, where it might only be an STR for a year or two in that round. It's opening up some more homes that's just things for people. And we're way above the gap, any level of half.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't, I don't see the problem. I don't, I don't see us needing to limit it because we have short term rentals limited right now, and we're at nineteen to thirty five in that limit, so.
You're already limited on STRs because of the distance between, right?
Yeah. And I'm I'm fine with that. Let's say like right next door to an STR, a guy wants to build an ADU, then you're not within.
Right.
So that's fine. I don't have.
Yeah, we have that two hundred foot limit. You can't be within two hundred foot of another STR, which limits anyway.
Right.
So, so.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think they should be as limitations. I think we, I'm not really clear on the parking.
Yeah, I'd like to know more.
Yeah, I mean, you got to have some kind of parking requirements. And you're not, if, according to the.
You're not allowed to have any parking.
We're only allowed, I have one. What's that? Is that what I'm saying, I think? Still for the front page, parking permits on the front page, the three, may not require more than one off street parking space. Was with the ADU.
And I don't think, right, we have any requirement for off street parking. I'm going, this was a long time ago. This was like two thousand eighteen.
I don't have that ordinance. I don't, I can't answer that question. I have that.
Yeah, I don't think we required off street parking for ADUs past that. But I've slept since then.
I'd also like to know more about the tap thing and whatever his thought is on requiring a new tap or being able to tap into the existing tap. I I don't, I'm not sure how I feel about that.
Yeah, that could be really hard if you're trying to tie into existing top. If you're building in the back of your house, more likely your task will run from, I mean, who knows?
Is that a conversation with?
It could be.
Steve.
Steve or Ken. I mean, it's really, you know, to keep the cost down, it's easier if you tie into what's there.
And that's.
If you have to pay tap fees and and put in meters and you have to go through all that versus just tying on, you know, if we're trying to get people to build.
That's counterproductive.
If, but it's up to them, you know, if they want the people to pay their own utility bill, then they're gonna build it with taps.
So that's how I guess I feel on that is if they want to, to, I mean, if you're building, like you said, a four, five, six hundred square foot little studio thing in the back, you don't want to spend twenty grand on tap and dig it and all that. So give it, give them the option as well.
Well, and you can impose a fee without necessarily requiring a separate tap. The idea being that you're now adding to the overall usage of your water system. And so a plant investment fee being paid by somebody, even though they're daisy chaining on to the existing tap, you know, is justified from that utility cost standpoint.
Is there any kind of fee if somebody adds on to their house, like adds an extra bedroom or two to their house? No, I mean, to me, this is similar.
No, the only thing that, I'm just thinking way back in history, a lot of times what they did, um, because utility lines weren't nearby, so one lot, you know, the guy would build two houses on two separate lots, but he would connect utilities to both houses, and eventually those houses sell. And then you have this guy that has his utilities running under that house, and you can't go on my property. So I mean, there's been times in my career where we've had to relocate people's utilities because.
Well, we have an issue up here with the old Blue and Betty Trent's old house, corner of St. Golden. They both run into the same sewer line.
And then to the name?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well, so you can't have issues with that, but if it's on the same lot, and they can't subdivide it because you know, it's got to meet certain subdivision requirements, then I think you're good. But if they own, say, two lots, and they want to build it on the other lot, then I think you have a problem.
I have that. And the lot that I have next door has its own water tap. It's, because I tore down the house, it was there, and it has it there, so I wouldn't necessarily be in that situation.
Right.
But my thought is, I I isn't exactly what you're saying is.
Yeah, I don't think you would, if there, if there's the ability to build it on a separate lot or subdivide on a separate lot, then I think you don't want them connected to the exist. So we'd have to look at that in ordinance to see.
I mean, the point of an ADU is that they're not a separate lot. That's absolutely, you know, a requirement that they are a a, they they are on the same lot by definition. That's what the state law was getting at. The state, this, the state legislature in their wisdom, and I would grant them this, they understood that what they had just done by virtue of their ADU statute was to essentially multiply by two the potential users of a municipality's water supply. Because most municipalities plan for their water use on a basis of lots. And those lots are going to be developed with one single family residence. So what the state legislature legislature came along and did with its legislation was it essentially said all municipalities who plan for one dwelling unit per lot, granted, ten people could live there, or however many people could live there, but all of you municipalities who planned your water system on the basis of one single family per lot, well, you now are going to be subject to that being doubled. And we understand, and so we won't restrict you from charging a tap fee for all those ADUs, because you didn't plan your water system on the basis of two dwelling units per lot. That's why they gave leeway with that, with regard to that.
Well, um, what about electrical? So you're saying this this ADU, it might have its own kitchen? So that's a lot of power there, and you're gonna try to. You run another loop to a dwelling on the same lot, correct? So you gotta try to have enough power in your place to run, you know.
And that might depend on the, the, the main house, if it has the capacity or not, right?
Yeah. I mean, the city doesn't pay, you know, the city isn't the electrical provider, so the city is not going to be in a position where it is getting not being paid for the services it's providing.
I mean, it's, it's got to be treated like a separate resident. If the people don't want it connected to their place, then yeah, the electricity, the water, the sewer could all be separate taps, couldn't it? Yep. They have to have access to the pole for the drop, but.
I definitely want to hear Steve's insight.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, I'd like to hear Steve's insight and.
How many?
Ken's insight.
For. I was gonna say, I don't bet, I don't think there's too many eighty five in town. Then are they separating taps?
I'll, I'll try to get that information before, that's me.
And as far as the short term rental, I mean, if we had, if we're capped at thirty five and we have like thirty three, then I would be concerned about.
It would be more of a concern.
But being that we're only at nineteen, I don't know if it's, and we can I just don't know if it's gonna be. But I mean, to speak to your point, like, I absolutely agree with you, like, we were available housing, and so I don't know, I, but because we're only at nineteen right now with the double thirty five, I don't think it's necessary.
I agree. If we were closer to that.
But we can, we readdress it down there.
Yeah, I think the one thing to keep in mind is that if people look at your code and they see that ADUs can be used as STRs, accessory dwelling units can be used as short term rentals, then they're gonna make their plans, you know, on the basis of that. And your changes later, you know, they may be frustrated with that. So, you know, it's harder to put something in place, you know, later perhaps, but um that just is one of the considerations.
A certain percentage of ADUs can be STR. I wouldn't be impressed.
That's what we're asking. We want something like that in there. Just limit the number of ST ADUs that could be short term rentals, that could be in this order.
So would you limit that number to five within that thirty five?
That's amending a short term rental ordinance, which we can do.
Why, why would we? We have not, we're not volume over the part thirty five.
Just in this ordinance, they're asking Erin to only say five short term rentals. Five ADUs could be a short term rentals. Would that be in this ordinance?
No, Frank is correct. That would be in the short term rental ordinance.
So.
So yeah, sorry, you have to tell them the same thing.
So it's either, or so it's either.
We could allow them and then amend the report.
Short term. That's, I don't know. What's that? I'm sorry.
We can allow them and then amend the STR ordinance.
Okay.
When we decide whatever number.
Because I would, personally, I just feel like if we limit the ADU ordinance, it would maybe deter some people from building them. I'd rather than build them. And so if we, then we can uh amend the short term ordinance. Yeah, I think that'd be a better.
Well, and and I'm sorry, I may have spoke too quickly. It's probably a good idea to put put some sort of a footnote, or at least some sort of a note somewhere in this ordinance, if there is gonna be a limitation. But you can do that at the time. You go back to the tackle the short term rental ordinance. You you can amend two ordinances at the same time.
I think that's where they're.
You don't have to make that decision tonight. You know, you can think about it for a couple of weeks and make that determination at the next, at the airing, which we.
It's your first reading, so I think you go ahead if you want to. It's your call, but I'd suggest you go ahead and do the first reading. We've got it published. So it'll hit the paper, and then you have the second. So it'll hit the paper, and then you have the second, you'll have the second reading with a public hearing.
So we go ahead and make a motion to approve the ordinance, just prove it as it is.
On first read.
Erin, would it be appropriate to approve on first reading? With the addition of the short term renovation?
Uh, only if you. I, I didn't hear any consensus on what the short term rental issue resolution was.
We're wanting to go ahead and allow A D Us as S T Rs. So we would add that in.
I think if you want to allow them as S T Rs, there's no change to the ordinance.
Okay, so I make a motion, we approve on first reading ordinance twenty five dash zero six.
Vote please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, Erin.
Thank you all very much for your patience.
Agenda item B, consider approval of resolution twenty twenty five dash nineteen, a resolution certifying the home rule ballot questions for the city's regular November fourth, twenty twenty five election.
Okay, so this resolution is just so we can put the um, home rule charter commission out for vote on our ballot. You'll see on the back that we have our eight that will be. Hopefully our commission commissioners if it gets voted in.
So Carrie, is this the first part of the question, and then the second part is gonna be the list of people that will be on the committee?
Yeah, question.
Right, I see part A, yeah.
And then if you turn it over.
But that, I guess, to me, that seems, the first part of the question, seems a little vague as far as shall we go home rule or not? But is that, I guess, the question? The actual question is to form the charter.
Charter commission.
Or yeah, charter commission.
They will write the charter, which will be voted on by the city next year.
Okay, awesome.
If, if people vote no in the majority on this, then there's no commission, that stops there. But if they vote yes, which. We hope they at least let the citizens draft the charter, then they get to read it and, and decide next year if they want it or not. But right now, they're voting to not even have one drafted.
That next year part was the part I was confused.
Before we make a motion, I just wanna thank everybody that took the time to. Pick up a ballot, go out, get their signatures, and step up to be a part of this moving forward. You're amazing, you're moot, thank you.
Well, I hope we, in, in this process, I know when I went out and did it, I tried to talk to people, and I was trying to educating, everybody's still on the fence, and. I was hoping everybody was able to hit those meetings at the, at the Bu, but it's, I think it's very important for our community, and I think the people we've talked to that weren't sure, I think they. Cut, changed their mind from the people I talked to, but there's still some out there, they're still not sure, but hopefully.
Well, you can't stop here, if it's approved, the commission, everybody still has to, you know, move forward and educate the community, and maybe that's more town halls. Just talking about what, if the charter is written about what, you know, have them to ask questions.
And part of the charter too is gonna be public forum also, where if you're not even one of these people, you can still show up and.
They're public meetings, they'll be public meetings.
And people need to realize that.
Standing, is there comment allowed at the meetings by citizens, just to clarify and make sure I understand.
I would expect that the commission would want that, I mean, that's the whole purpose of the public meetings is to get public input. Erin, do they have to hold a public hearing at the end before they?
There has to be at least one public hearing, yes.
That's what you want.
Um, and I think it's important to notice, well, um, so there are going to be eight names on the ballot. There was one person who was short, one signature, um, so we can still move forward with voting in the commission, and the city council can. Um, appoint the ninth person, um, so just for clarity, cause I know, cause nine people have to serve. On the commission, and so when you see your ballot, there's only eight names, um. That's, that's why, so we'll be able to appoint somebody after the election, if the community decides to. Um, approve the city, um, forming the charter commission, so just for.
Yeah, thank you, mayor, for adding that.
Further discussion, can I get a motion, please?
We'll make a motion, we approve resolution forty twenty five dash nineteen, are you seconded?
Vote please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Um, we will be moving the executive session, um, before item C, because it's um, related to item C, so at this time. I move to go into executive session, executive session pursuant to C R S twenty four dash si- dash saves dash four zero two four. One subsection A, for the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of any real, personal, or other property interest. Two subsection E, to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations. Developing strategy for negotiations and instructing negotiators. And three subsection B, for a conference with legal counsel for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions, all related to potential land acquisition. So at this time, we need to clear the room as we move.
We need a second on the motion and then a vote, please.
I get a second, please. Vote please.
Yes.
No, I'm sorry, mayor Proton Brown. Yes, sorry, Erin, thank you.
Thank you.